Thank you, everyone, and welcome to the June 8th Select Board meeting. Please note that in accordance with the emergency orders announced by Governor Charlie Baker to protect public health during the COVID-19 outbreak, this Select Board meeting will not be open to the public for physical attendance, and the Select Board members are calling in via Zoom conference. The meeting is being live streamed and cable broadcast by the Easton Community Access Television on Comcast Nightgate, RAC23, and on that's website, If you're watching at home and you have a question or a comment, you can email Michael Blanchard at blanchard@easton MA.us or pose your question on the Q&amp;A feature of the Zoom portal. Please remember to include your name and street address for our minutes. At this time, I'd like to ask each Select Board member to state their name to ensure that we have a quorum.
Craig Barger.
Tom Broussard.
Charles King.
Mark Lamb.
So that's a full house here. The first item that we have is a presentation on the track from the Traffic Safety Committee, a report on the Bay Road southern portion curvature signage. We received an email from a resident in that area that was concerned after we had a recent accident on Bay Road. So the Traffic Safety Committee did review it, and David Field, I believe, will walk us through that.
Thank you, Dottie. Dave Field, Director of Public Works. Kevin Partridge, Fire Chief, may be joining us as well. But I'll start, and also representing Gary Sullivan, Chief of Police, who was also a member of the Traffic Safety Committee. The Traffic Safety Committee was asked to look at an area, especially around House Number 539 on Bay Road due to a recent fatal accident and other previous accidents. Bay Road's a two-lane road, as you know, runs north-south. It has a 40 mile an hour speed limit, except between Sawmill and Prospect where it's 35 miles an hour. Bay Road's in good conditions, just repaved in 2018. Easton DPW performed a review of the available accident data from the last five years. We performed a speed and volume count, reviewed existing roadway signage, and performed a ballbank test to determine the safe speed of the curves in question. And based on our review, we found the crash rate on Bay Road was lower than the statewide average. The average in 85th percentile speed on Bay Road was reasonable compared to the posted speed limits, that the existing warning signs are appropriate, and that no advisory speed plaques are warranted at this time. If you'd like, I can go into more detail on some of those items.
Sure.
So the big one we looked at was accident crash data and look at the crash rate. There's two main sections on Bay Road where there's been high or higher than expected crash history. One's between Blue Heron Lane and Prospect Street near House 539, and the other's between Prospect Street and Sawmill Lane near House 482. There's a third curve at the Norton Town Line, which has a very few crashes at that, so we did not analyze that piece. Unfortunately, for a variety of reasons, it's crashes on all roads. Just over the last five years in Easton, there's been 2,336 crashes and eight fatalities. It's important when we look at crashes to look if there's any patterns and look at the rate of crashes and compare that with statewide average to determine if we have problems. The segment crash rate we looked at is measured in million crashes per million vehicle miles traveled. So we looked at Blue Heron Lane and Prospect Street. In that section, there was nine crashes of the last five years, and that has a crash rate of 1.64. The statewide average for this type of roadway, which is a minor collector, is 3.58. So that's below the statewide crash rate. So that indicates that there's really not a problem. Although it's unfortunate, there's crashes, but there's crashes on all roads. That is not an excessive number, and it's below the statewide crash rate. Then we looked at the section between Prospect Street and Sawmill Lane, and we found there was 11 reported crashes over that last five-year period for a crash rate of 2.37, which is still below the statewide crash rate of 3.58. The other thing we looked at was the speed. We found that the average speed in this whole section of Bay Road was 38 miles per hour, and that the 85th percentile speed was 44 miles an hour. So on a road that's posted as 40 miles an hour and 35, that's pretty reasonable in the scheme of things as far as our speeds go. We also looked at the curve warning signs that are out there now, and we determined that they are in conformance with MUTCD, which is the Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices. So that means they're put up far enough in advance, and the messaging is appropriate. And then the final thing we did was we did a ballbank test. A ballbank test is basically an inclinometer, which, as you go through a curve, either a manual ballbank, it's a little ball bearing that swings up and down, and you can measure the degree of the curvature and the stress that puts on the vehicle and the passengers in the vehicle. We use a digital inclinometer or ballbank indicator, and that basically tells us what the safe speed is that's comfortable for a wet pavement condition with a significant factor of safety that a person can go through on those curves. So we do trial runs at various speeds, so 25, 30, 35, 40 miles an hour, with this ballbank to see if you exceed the recommended allowances for the ballbank. And we did our runs, and we found that the worst-case scenario was 35 miles an hour was the speed which we triggered. One of the situations where you'd say, right, that's as fast as you really want to go under wet pavement conditions with a factor of safety. So that means that, based on our posted speed limits, you can go pretty much the speed limit through those curves, so there's no advisory speed plaque necessary. In a case where you'd have like an off-ramp, or you have a 65 mile an hour highway, and you have a 30 mile an hour advisory speed for the off-ramp, you would only put an advisory speed if it was at least 10 miles an hour difference between the speed limit and the speed you could take the curve at. So in all of our analysis and investigation, we found that there really is no issue on Bay Road as far as we could tell when you look at speed, accident rate, warning signs, and need for advisory speed plaques. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have, or go through any of this in more detail.
I have a couple, if I may.
Sure.
Chuck? Hi, David. First of all, what is a minor collector?
That's just a classification of a road. You have major arterials, minor arterials, major collectors, minor collectors. Bay Road, based on its size, the amount of traffic, it's 5,700 vehicles a day, is a minor collector, so it's used to compare apples to apples and oranges to oranges.
Okay, I think that most of us, if not all of us, have driven that road many times. And it's about 20 years ago, one of my sons was a passenger, and there was a bang-up, another teen was driving, I'm guessing too fast in that area, but there were some very serious but non-lasting injuries that took place. And even with myself or others, I think that as a mature driver, if I'm going a couple of miles over, this is kind of a roller coaster effect in that area. But the main question I have is, how does that kind of analysis differ from, say, where a tragedy happened a few years ago at an intersection? That particular one was on Furnace and Prospect, I believe, and eventually a light was put in. A light doesn't make sense here, but how does the analysis differ in a case like that versus here on Bay Road?
Yeah, so that's a great, great question. So at Prospect and Foundry, there was existing accident rate that was pretty high, and the town was, at this time, this is before I had been in town, but the town was seeking to put a light there through the state. And after fatality, they accelerated the process, didn't go with the state process and did it locally with local funds. So in that case, the light was needed before the accident happened, and it helped accelerate the funding for that light to be put in. Similar to, we're trying to get lights at Elm Street right now. We just completed a light at Union Street. Those had crash rates or above the statewide crash rate for intersections, and that's why those were needed. In this case, we don't, you know, the amount of accidents, although any accident is horrific and shocking for the person that's in it and involved with it and impacted by it.
Nearby neighbors.
Yeah, exactly. So there's no dismissing that, you know, these are tough situations, but when your segment crash rate is lower than the statewide average, that indicates it's not necessarily a problem with the roadway. It's just a problem that unfortunately you have outliers. So we have people that may be going too fast or not paying attention. And that happened, we have much higher crash rates on other roads in town than we do on Bay Road. And we're trying to actively get lights at those, into, you know, do other countermeasures to solve that problem. Right now, Bay Road has a lower than the statewide crash rate. So again, it doesn't indicate that that should be our real focus. And on a segment like this, there's really no way to stop that other than straightening out curves. And in this case, we don't really have curvature that's excessive. As you recall, on Depot Street, it used to be called the S-curve. Back in the day, it was some severe curves, and those are straightened. There's really not a curvature on Bay Road that would lend itself to straightening out just to make the road stick straight. But, you know, so that's what we looked at when we looked at the analysis.
Thank you.
David, question, is there any latitude that we have from a town perspective if we so chose to explore putting up some type of additional signage? Or is that state mandated, and we've done the assessment?
So that's a great, great point, Mr. Broussard. We actually are going to be installing as part of our retroreflectivity requirements, new warning signs over the next year or two for all throughout town. So one of the things we're going to try to do here is accelerate that, put up new high-visibility curve warning signs. And what we're going to do is we're going to duplicate those on both sides of the road. So we're going to basically double the amount of signs that are out there. That's something we can do. The warrants for these signs have to be met for MUTCD, and they are met. So we can, but we're simply going to double them and make them more prominent. So hopefully that will have an impact, positive impact on the roadway. But in most of these cases, the accidents are not, drivers are not familiar with the roadway. Curve warning signs tend to be there to alert drivers who are unfamiliar with the roadway. I don't believe that was the issue in this accident. And, you know, going back a ways, a lot of the people that get in the accidents, they frequently travel this road. So not sure that will do much, but it's a very low-cost measure that we can implement, and we will implement.
Could we insert, instead of it being a pure reflective, like we did with the stop sign over at the Target Plaza, could we make it so that it was something that flashed to create enhanced visibility and recognition?
Yeah, so the flashing signs, although the effectiveness of those are not fully fleshed out, I would save those type of expense for roads that we needed them, that we had, like, for instance, a high crash rate that was higher than we'd expect, and try to put in a countermeasure there to warn people. The flashing signs are fairly expensive, $1,500 to $2,500 per unit, and they need frequent maintenance, they need the batteries replaced, they're solar. So there's significant cost there, where we can replace these existing signs for about $50 a unit right now. We would have to spend about $10,000 in signage to sign Bay Road with flashing signs. And again, the effectiveness of that is really to be determined.
And I have one last follow-up. I apologize, I appreciate my fellow members allowing me these questions. The last question I have is, is the type of accident important? Meaning, yes, we may fall technically below a threshold for the accidents, but the type of accidents that we see on this road are of a more serious and severe nature. And therefore, although the pure stat of number might not get you there, but the number of severe, and I'm sure that there is no statement of what that is, so I apologize for talking in soft, subjective tones. But does that bear at all into this conversation as well?
It does and it doesn't. Obviously, the fatality is the reason why this was really, you know, brought this time over the last nine accidents that happened there over the last five years to the forefront. But as far as how do you mitigate that? You'd have to look at each accident and what the cause of that accident was. And if there was a consistent cause that, you know, X, Y, and Z caused this accident, and there's a countermeasure that we can do to solve that problem, then we could make that change. In this case, I don't believe that that's the case. We're probably talking about distracted or inattentive driving. And I'm not sure what countermeasure we have other than, you know, hopefully, you know, advanced warning signs. We can't drive the vehicles for people, so we have to rely on people being attentive and being prudent in choosing their speed.
Thank you so much, I appreciate that.
Craig, anything?
Sorry, go ahead.
Craig, you got anything? He's on mute. Mark?
Hi, Dave, how are you?
Good.
Excellent. I have a couple of questions. You mentioned eight fatalities in the town of Easton. How far back does that go?
That's over the last five years.
Five years. And in those, of those eight fatalities over five years, have any of those fatalities occurred at the same location or the same general location?
I didn't look into that. I just pulled that information off Mass DOT's crash portal. I didn't go look at that.
Understood. Where I am going with that question is if, I'm curious if there's been multiple fatalities at this location. You mentioned there was nine accidents in five years at that location, I think, that's what you said. And out of those nine, obviously, we know one of whom is a fatality. Are there others that are fatalities at that location?
I don't believe so. In the last five years, I don't believe there has been, but I'm not 100% sure on that. I have to go through the data. And I believe that we had had multiple fatalities on Purchase and Washington. That, just off the top of my head, I know of those, but...
Okay.
So I'm sorry, I don't have that information on this section.
I always tend to ask questions where the information is not there. I'm just, you know, if that's a location that has multiple fatalities, to Tom's point, I know that there are... You know, we look at data to guide us on these decisions. But sometimes, we, you know, to Tom, again, to Tom's point, sometimes we have to allow other things to come into our decision-making process that is not data-driven. So I was, I'm curious, if at some point, could you find out if there's been multiple fatalities at that location?
Yes, I can definitely do that.
That would be great. That's my last question.
Okay, and David, we sent a response to the person who requested this, I assume, right?
We did.
Okay.
They were invited to this meeting as well.
Okay, I just looked at the attendees, and I don't see who are listed. All right. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, David, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, David.
Thank you.
Moving on to the next item, discussion and vote for a contract award extension, Building Cleaning Services, SJ Services.
Dave can actually speak to this one as well.
Sure, thank you, Connor. So last year, we bid out our Building Cleaning Services and awarded a contract to SJ Services. This year, we have the option to extend that at our own behest, and we're recommending to simply extend that service at this time for one additional year for $65,568. And that would end the period June 30th, 2020. If we were so inclined, the following year, we could also have one more extension if SJ Services agrees.
So this is a vote to extend it for... Extend it through June 30th and then potentially extend it again till June 30th, 2021?
This would extend it to 2021.
Okay.
What was the amount on that again?
What sort of cleaning do they do?
They do our, basically, the daily cleaning for DPW, Water, Police, Town Hall, and Frothingham Hall.
This, for the board's identification, this is a service that we used to have our own personnel for that we eliminated in the budget years ago in response to budget pressures at that time and outsourced. We were able to get more buildings cleaned for comparable price of a salary and benefits package.
David, is this company prepared for the new paradigm that is probably coming our way regarding maybe more deeper cleaning, including items like disinfecting, you know, key areas that might get a lot of use with public interaction? I know we don't know what that new world order will necessarily be, but do you feel confident that this company will be able to scale up, I guess, from where they're currently at and address those future needs that we might have?
Yep, that's a great point. So this is the base cleaning contract, and the scope of services is fairly prescribed. We also have the same company, SJ Services, right now doing a deep disinfection and cleaning of all touch surfaces throughout the town for a separate scope of work. So we're doing that for as long as we need. It doesn't apply to the base cost. We pay above and beyond for that additional cleaning that's going on right now. So we'll continue to monitor that and, you know, make sure that, as we reopen Town Hall and Frothingham Hall and Public Works and Water to the public, that we're complying with those. But this cost that you see here is the base cost and doesn't entertain those additional disinfection and deeper cleaning. And we're doing that through a separate scope of services at this time.
And Connor, you're probably anticipating, thank you, David, you're probably anticipating when I go next, which is, are those costs covered by the federal programs that we can avail ourselves of as terms of COVID-19 costs?
Yes.
That we go forward into next year's budget? Or do we have to budget more to cover for that next year?
Yeah, so first, the answer to the first question is yes. The extraordinary cleaning, above and beyond your standard contracted services, is included in eligible cost for CARES funding, and it's also able to be accounted for in the state-authorized deficit account for unanticipated COVID expenses, which is what we have been and will continue doing. So as the board might recall, CARES Act funding for Easton is roughly 2.2 million. There's a lot of restrictions on what that can be used for. It cannot be used to offset revenue for our general operations. It can be used for things like this. So our initial ask for fiscal '20 of $390,000 was submitted last week following your vote. That includes funding for this service through this fiscal year, and we will be accounting for it into the coming fiscal year for the second ask.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Is that $2.2 million go beyond July, June 30th of this year? Is that what I understand?
Calendar year.
For calendar year, not fiscal or federal?
It's 2.2 total over the course of, it straddles two fiscal years for us, fiscal '20 and '21, and the submissions that we believe are due by the end of calendar 2020, but those standards for fiscal '21's ask have not come out yet. So it's a confusing way of saying, to our knowledge, it's a calendar year.
Okay, would somebody like to make a motion to award a contract extension to SJ Services for Building Cleaning Services to June 30th, 2021?
Craig Barger, so moved.
Second, Tom Broussard.
All in favor, starting with you, Craig?
Craig Barger, yes.
Tom Broussard, yes.
Chuck King, yes.
Mark Lamb, yes.
Full Janetti, yes. Next is the vote to approve issuance and other details of the bond anticipation note dated June 17. It looks like, David, we're, I don't think we have anything else from him, and I don't see him now, so... Thank you so much. Thanks, David, for being here. It's, I can't see everybody on my screen, so it's a little bit confusing for me when people start to have questions, so just bear with me on that. Normally, we do, we go in order with Craig first. So when you guys are going out of order, it's just throwing me off a little bit here to follow, so... The vote to approve the issuance of the bond anticipation note. And Connor and Linda, do you want to take that?
Sure. Good evening, how are you?
Good.
Happy to see everybody, even if it's not in person. I sent a memo around earlier this week concerning this ban. This is $4.73 million for a variety of different purposes, which I can go through. The water well number four we placed in, $39,000. That pretty much finishes up that particular project. $321,000 for the Mansfield IMI payment, basically, for this year. $3.6 million for the early elementary school project. This is the beginning of that project. We'll be seeing this many times over the next little while while we finance this project temporarily, and then eventually permanently. And then lastly, $770,000 for the Depot Land, the acquisition, the land acquisitions for the Depot Street, which is basically everything that they asked for so far. The town, through our financial advisors, accepted bids on this issuance on May 28th, and we had four bidders. The winning bidder had a net interest cost of .7906, which is nice, but not unexpected for this, in this environment anyways. So, and this is just a normal, we generally come to the town in June and do a ban.
So Linda, for people at home, can you just describe what the bond anticipation note is, or a ban, as you call it?
Yes, I'm sorry. The bond anticipation note is temporary financing to, when municipal financing, you don't want to permanently finance everything because of project. For instance, the early elementary school project. Once you permanently finance it, all of the money has to be spent within a very short period of time. So instead of permanently financing it, you temporarily finance the project in segments. And though, one of the ways that you can temporarily finance a project is through a bond anticipation note or a ban.
Thank you. And so your notes here say this is .7906% versus last year's interest rate of 2.2%. So it's a significant savings there.
Yes, yes.
All right.
It's Craig Barger. Just a quick question about, can you explain the premium of $33,000, what that is?
Sure, the premium, we ask for a premium from the bidders, and the premium is just additional money that the bidder will give us, and it essentially writes down the amount of interest that we have to pay back.
Thank you.
Tom, any questions?
None.
Chuck?
I'm good.
And Mark?
I am all set.
All right, great. Can I get a motion to adopt the votes prepared by bond counsel in connection with the town's $4,730,000 general obligation bond anticipation notes dated June 17th, 2020, and incorporate the text of the vote of the Select Board into the minutes of this meeting?
Craig Barger, so moved.
Second, Tom Broussard.
And roll call vote, Craig?
Craig Barger, yes.
Broussard, yes.
King, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Full Janetti, yes. Thank you. Thanks, Linda.
Thank you.
Linda.
Thanks, Linda.
Thank you.
Okay, next is a discussion and vote on the Select Board policy, preparation and accommodation for outdoor restaurant dining in Easton through November 1st, 2020 in accordance with Governor Charlie Baker's COVID-19 Order Number 35. Connor or Michael, do you want to tell us a little bit about this?
Yes, thank you, I'd be happy to. Just for a brief background, as the board is aware, Governor Baker announced on Saturday the beginning of Phase Two, Step One of the Massachusetts reopening plan effective today. As part of Phase Two, restaurants may provide outdoor table service if they are able to meet specific health and safety standards. In advance of that announcement earlier last week, the governor issued an order that would allow for Select Boards to adopt unified permitting and approval processes for outdoor dining at the start of Phase Two, again, running through November 1st later this year. The town assembled a reopening Easton Working Group, which was a cross-departmental team, including members of the Planning and Economic Development Department, Planning Board, Town Hall... Planning Board, Town Administration, Building Department, Fire Department, Board of Health And representative from the town's Economic Development Council. And this group worked throughout the week to quickly develop a proposed policy for your consideration tonight. That would allow restaurants to apply and receive approval under this order for outdoor dining in Easton. The policy in application, which you've received a copy of, incorporates the necessary health and safety standards. While putting a real high priority on an expeditious permitting process To support our local businesses, which we all know were hit so hard by the pandemic. If you approve this policy and application tonight, we plan to send out the materials directly to all of our permit holding restaurants. Immediately after this meeting, as well as place them on our webpage. And our office would recommend approval of the policy applications and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have and Madam Chair, I'm sure you will, as well as you are a member of this working group representing the Economic Development Council.
Sure, so it's not as simple as saying, you know, you can put chairs and tables outside any establishment, that we have to make sure that You know, the, the safety of the public, the safety of the restaurants and their staff and Under normal circumstances, that would mean going before a number of boards and committees in the town and having different permits. So this will streamline it so that it will become an administrative function so that People, you know, if a restaurant wants to do that service, they don't have to come before the select board every single time. We're essentially having the administration review that, which would be Public Safety Inspection Services, Board of Health. And Michael's office for licensing and they would, the business would need to Basically give kind of a layout of what they want to do. We would review it internally and then give the okay on it And go by and take a look and inspect it. So we want to really try to get a quick turnaround with this. I'm very glad that the governor had voted, had Made this executive decision to waive some of the longer requirements, for instance, if we issued A liquor license extension. The old way, the ABCC in Boston would have to review that and vote on it before it could be enacted. That could take up to a month and You know, by then, our restaurants are really eagerly anticipating reopening, so this will really cut back on Some of the time that's needed for them to get going. And we have talked with some of the restaurants in town, they're very Seem to be very excited about reopening and also working cooperatively with the town to make that happen a little bit quicker. So Craig, do you have any comments or questions?
I just had read somewhere that one, one town in the South Shore had closed some roads to allow businesses Restaurants to put their tables on the roads. Because I'm thinking about some of the, the restaurants and I'm trying to figure out where would they put their outdoor dining? That would allow for social distancing as well as allowing them enough seating to, to make it worthwhile. So I don't know if that's something that we had thought about. Or whether that makes any sense for some of those restaurants that don't have large areas where they might put up tables.
Do you want to take that or do you want me to?
Dottie, I'm happy to speak to that.
Hi, sorry, can you hear me?
Yep.
So Craig, yes, part of the application and policy actually provides establishments with an opportunity To, it, it provides for a possibility of use of public property. So public sidewalks, public streets, things of that nature for restaurants like you described that may not have A parking lot, for example, that they can, you know, commandeer a portion of. No specific suggestions or, you know, road closings were proposed as part of this working group. Our focus was more on Getting the application and policy out so that, you know, large majority of restaurants could start the process. But that certainly is a possibility under the policy as it is written now.
And just to build on that, the select board does already, and it's relatively common practice, municipal government, you can issue licenses for use. You're talking about a license for use of public property. And the reason why that wasn't built into this Is mainly because that, that starts getting into very different legal liability and insurance questions. And that would have simply just taken us too much time, but we had a matter of days to do this and worked through a weekend to get this out. I mean, this, this policy and the executive order from the governor are quite extraordinary in that it basically circumvents all permitting. Through a process that the board can adopt. It circumvents zoning, which normally is adopted by town meeting, it circumvents the hearing processes for that, so it's It's a lot to pull together and to layer in an automatic approval of the use of public property. Was not something we could pull together immediately to be included in this. That being said, the board does issue licenses for the use of sidewalks. We have one Currently with a restaurant downtown and that is something that businesses can request and we can work out an expansion of a license or changes to those licenses. But the real priority on this was to get a policy in place under the governor's orders that would allow for Restaurants to expand their use outdoors, whether it's to parking lots or other property that they have control over.
My, my question was referenced to, to a restaurant that doesn't have that access. Doesn't have a, a large parking lot or it uses public parking or something, as opposed to a restaurant that has a parking lot attached to it.
Well, this is a work in progress and, and we're working in good faith with the restaurants, so they're coming forward and talking about their ideas and There's a lot of brainstorming going on back and forth with the administrative groups, so if that, if that is An only option and they talk through it, we'll see what happens with it, but right now, the, the businesses that have come forth. Nobody had asked or proposed that.
Thank you.
And to be clear for folks who are watching, the, the super majority of restaurants have their own parking. In Easton, so but there are those impacted and we do have license agreements and the board could expand those on a case by case basis.
Yeah. Uh, Tom?
I would just say that I think this is a great development and fully support trying to do anything we can to help out the businesses here in Easton. And so if there are steps that we can do, I think to Craig's point, I would be amenable to continuing to explore How we could, how we could even further help business in Easton during these tough times. So I'm appreciative of all the hard work that the, the team put together in making this possible and certainly fully support it and Would continue to look for ways that we can help support business in Easton, whether at this crisis.
Thanks, Tom. Chuck?
I'm eager to see it happen. Of course, we, to repeat what many have been saying, I'm eager to have these places open up and Make some money and as long as their safety is the first concern.
Thanks. And Mark?
I think this is a no brainer. I think that supporting our local businesses, our restaurants in this manner and in, in any other manner Is imperative, long term and for even selfish reasons. We are dependent on their success, so when they succeed, we do better, literally, financially. So for a multitude of reasons, it is in our best interest to support them in every way possible and this is First step in that and it's a work in progress and I'm sure it will be evolving, so I'm ready to vote.
Well, I guess, just to add one more thing before we take the vote, just a, a comment and an observation is This is new to everyone. It's new to the town. It's new to the administration. It's new to the restaurant owners. It's new to their staff. So it's going to be, it's going to be a different dining experience and I saw some comments that somebody put on social media That we really need to have a lot of patience. Everybody's going to be, you know, trying to find their way through this and If you go to a restaurant and you're ordering You know, try to be respectful of the people that work there as they're trying to maybe work out some of the glitches of a new routine that they're not used to. So I guess we would all be excited that there's new opportunities to get out of our house and dine. And be patient as our businesses find their way with that because It's not, it's, it's not even close to the same way that they normally serve when their kitchen is closer to their customers and things like that. So I know that we welcome this opportunity to see the businesses get back, get back on their feet again. So with that, if we could take a vote to adopt the board policy For the preparation and accommodation for outdoor restaurant dining service in Easton. This will expire with the governor's order on November first, twenty twenty.
All moved, Craig Barger.
Second, Tom Broussard.
And roll call vote?
Barger, yes.
Broussard, yes.
King, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Full Janetti, yes. Thank you very much, everyone. Next, the town administrators fiscal twenty twenty one budget change memo, not memo, memo number three.
Thank you, Dottie. So as the board has become accustomed, we are iterating on our operating budget, basically on a weekly basis right now. Kind of coming into town meeting on two wheels, two weeks from today. Working to try to balance a deficit that was revised at roughly two point five million dollars in mid-May. That was brought down to just over one million, the first of June. And this change memo entirely on the expense side reduces the projected deficit for fiscal twenty one from one million seventy seven thousand Down to three hundred and sixty three thousand and change. So general economic outlooks informing what we're doing here, May unemployment figures nationally were better than expectations. At thirteen point three percent, reflecting twenty one million people continuously out of work. It's a decrease from fourteen point seven. Although that's an improvement, it's important to keep our eye on the ball that that's still unprecedented unemployment levels since the Great Depression. Other national and regional economic outlooks remain grim with some worsening. May tax collections in Massachusetts are, according to State House News and the Collections Office of the State, putting the state on track To fall two and a quarter billion dollars short of their revenue expectations for the current fiscal year that ends in three weeks. And at the time of writing this, there's no significant new information from the state Or federal legislators on any kind of municipal Financial support legislation. If that changes, you'll be first to know. So on the revenue side, we did not edit our revenue assessments since one week ago. That remains the same. We're projecting a pretty meager increase to revenues of four hundred thirty eight thousand. Which is one percent over last year's budget levels. So all the changes on the deficit come from the expense side. As I noted in May and in previous memos, concessions from labor partners. Our labor unions would help reduce our operating expenses and minimize the necessity of position eliminations in the budget. On the town side, we had DPW, professional admin and clerical. Along with non-union staff, give back just about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars in wages for next year. Which helped tremendously in reducing town operating budgets. However, even with those wage freezes Which will limit the reductions in positions that we have to make, the, the financial circumstances are such that we still need to do so. So generally, what this budget will do On the town side, Department of Municipal Finance, we've reduced town department spending by about forty six thousand dollars there. That is reflective of eliminating a full-time clerical position. That elimination is going to result in a reorganization and consolidation of front-facing customer service staff. Which will necessarily reduce the customer service response capabilities of those departments. They'll still be able to perform their duties. But they will have fewer people to do so. Inspection services, there was a full-time administrative position shared between inspection services and the Board of Health. That has been eliminated. That's consistent with the May eighteen budget memos principles that we're going to try to close this deficit. While protecting public health and technical capabilities, this does not reduce inspectional staff. It does reduce customer service staff. And that's going to necessitate an increased focus on technology-based service through e-permitting in lieu of that support staff. Health and community services. How, one and a half positions total, half of that is spoken for, as I just said, with that shared position. We're going to increase some hours and some other areas, a, a minor amount, so in total, you're looking at a reduction of about one and A third full-time positions. That's going to reduce the budget by sixty eight thousand next year. It's important to note Health and Community Services, the idea, you know, the headline about, you know, town cutting health department budget during pandemic doesn't Seem to make a lot of sense. These reductions that I'm talking about eliminate a customer service function And it reallocates some of the functions of a vacant positions program functions. These reductions don't reduce health inspectors or health inspection capabilities, nor do they reduce program availability Through that department for vulnerable populations. That was a key priority for us. That is not being reduced. I'm going to have more information about the broader reorganization of that department next week, because a lot of this is a work in progress. One department that's going to look very different moving into the next year that we haven't spent much time on Talking about in the context of a fiscal twenty one budget is dispatch. So as the board is aware, the town has for many years been working towards Regionalizing our public safety dispatch services in a joint venture with Foxborough, Mansfield and Norton. Called the Southeastern Massachusetts Regional Emergency Communications Center. Lovingly known as SEMREC for short. The first phase of that went live last year and that brought Foxborough and Mansfield online with Regional Dispatch. And the SEMREC Board of Directors made up of the town administrators of each of those communities executed a contract in December of twenty nineteen For the reconstruction of SEMREC's permanent future home, which is High Rock in Foxborough. I believe Tom Broussard may have had occasion to visit that last week. I'm Really happy to hear his thoughts on that. That construction is moving as anticipated and it is still slated for completion in late summer or early fall twenty twenty. Once that construction is complete, Easton's going to dissolve its municipal dispatch department And convert to a regional dispatch service model using SEMREC. At that time, the town's planning on employing approximately four FTE civilian desk clerk staff to provide in-person support at the police department. In doing so, we will be reducing budgeted positions by at least five full-time equivalent from the current level. The transition to regional services and that associated reduction in personnel allow us to level fund At zero percent that budget. So in summary, those adjustments reflect a reduction of about seven and a half full-time equivalent personnel From our current staff level of one hundred and sixty nine. In total, our budgets for fiscal twenty one for all town departments in the aggregate have been reduced by about a hundred and thirty seven thousand from the last memo. And in total, those reflect an increase of zero point six one percent. There's still a deficit and so there will be additional cuts programmed for town departments through the reduction of budgeted personnel To reduce that deficit further and get us to a balanced budget memo, which I plan to have done by a week from now. So these changes are difficult, but they are necessary in light of a revenue shortfall that we are looking at. And there will be more coming on the town side. School Department, Easton Public Schools, their budget for fiscal twenty one has been reduced by an additional five hundred and seventy six thousand since the last memo. And now reflects an increase of only a zero point six four percent over their current budget level. Included in this is a, in this reduction is the school committee's acceptance of wage concessions offered by their SPEA cafeteria unit, SPEA Clerical unit, the paraprofessional unit, Eastern Educators Association unit, be a non-unit support staff and cabinet folks Which total approximately sixty nine thousand dollars. In addition, sixteen and three quarters full-time equivalent positions are being eliminated From their current budgeted staff level of six hundred and sixty five. The school's efforts continue concurrent to ours to reduce further and balance the budget. And I, I commend the superintendent and the school committee for what I know from personal experience is an incredibly difficult task And one that none of us get into this line of work to do. But is nonetheless necessary in light of the recession. So in summary, The reductions to town and school departmental budgets bring us down to the deficit of three hundred sixty three thousand. That remains and needs to be eliminated to balance the budget. The question came up at prior meetings about regional assessments, particularly for Southeastern. The question came up at prior meetings about regional assessments, particularly for Southeastern Regional Schools. We have been in communication with their finance department and unfortunately, regional school assessments are going to continue to reflect the last official fiscal twenty one budget from the Commonwealth, which is the governor's January budget before the pandemic hit. And that is not going to change in the next two weeks before town meeting. And so there's no reduction being made to this line item projected to increase by nine percent over the current levels. That may change over the summer, and if it does, we would make adjustments to that in the fall. Fall, we'll see probably significantly more adjustments to our then-current year fiscal year budget than what we typically would do because of the amount of things that are still unknown right now on the revenue side. So absent significant unplanned revenue relief from the Commonwealth of the United States this week, or any surprise reductions in those regional assessments over which we don't have control. The remainder of the three hundred and sixty three thousand dollar deficit has to be closed through additional reductions in departmental budgets in order to balance our budget. So I'm willing to take any questions about that.
Sure. You want to go first, Craig?
I just want to thank you and Wendy and your team for, this, this has got to be a very, very difficult, very painful thing to have to do. And I appreciate the work that you have put into it, and I thank you for that. I don't have any questions at the moment.
Tom?
I echo what Craig said. It's often we ask you folks as leaders, you and Dr. Cabral, Connor, to help us build services to add value to our communities, whether it's our town or it's our student population or our school. And it is a difficult exercise to undertake, looking at a budget and expense and not be able to necessarily do that. And so I applaud wherever we are able to make ground up in these times. And I acknowledge the reality of that time who may have to concede services in order to get to a financial standpoint. The only thing I would reiterate during that conversation is it sounds as if you are being thoughtful, not just for this year, but for future years. And from that perspective, I think it is important because as we acknowledged on our last call, I think that while we have an immediate need to find a path to getting this year fixed, it has to be done, I think, with a way or an eye towards the future to ensure that we are not handstrong next year. Because I believe, as I think many of us do, that this is not a one-year budget challenge and that there are a lot of solves that will be in place by the time we have this discussion next year. So I would just ask you to continue to be thoughtful and Dr. Cabral to be thoughtful. Sometimes it's not just being thoughtful as to how we enter into this discussion, but it's also how we exit from this discussion and what that looks like to maximize value for the citizens in our town, our residents in our town. So thank you for that, Connor. And we're, we're a lot closer than I had expected to be. And I think that's just indicative of the amount of effort and hard conversations and difficult thought processes and decision-making that you both had to make.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chuck?
I would echo what my fellow selectmen are saying and to Connor and Dr. Cabral and their staffs. There has to be some incredibly wrenching decisions to be made and incredibly hard work that they've been going through in the last few weeks especially. Thank you.
Thanks, Chuck. Mark?
Thank you, Connor. Thank you, Dr. Cabral. I don't envy your position. I'm sure this is not why you, you got into this position or why Dr. Cabral got into her position. So I, I feel for you. It's necessary in order to keep Easton somewhat of what it is. And I do have an exceptional appreciation for looking off into the future and anticipating next year's budget and the future year's budgets. And I don't think that a lot of people are aware that that is being so heavily considered, especially with consideration and respect to our reserves. So, thank you.
Thanks, Mark. And, you know, I echo what, what everyone has said so far. And I particularly want to thank you and Dr. Cabral for your leadership in taking your own wage concessions for the next budget cycle and the unions and non-union employees that have also stepped up to, to ease that burden with taking wage concessions themselves. Nobody wants to have layoffs or cut positions or not refill positions. And unfortunately, we're, we're so lean on our budget. You know, really, staff and benefits is, is the area that has to get impacted. And, you know, it's, these are, these are really tough times. I think every year we do a budget cycle, we think, all right, this is the year that we're finally getting a little bit ahead. We've made some really great financial policy changes over the past several years. We've started to do look-aheads to be planning budgets over the next five years. And how do our budget decisions this year impact over the next five years? And what can we do to have a sustainable budget? So they're very complex and challenging conversations. And I think that you've been incredibly transparent in the way that you've presented the information to us so that it is easy and digestible to understand, even though it's not, you know, not ultimately what we want to see. But we can follow along and see the process on how these changes happen. And next week, hopefully, we will be able to close that budget gap. Well, we'll have to do it by town meeting. So I wish you a lot of, a lot of luck as you try to explore that last. I think the last pieces of this can sometimes be the toughest. So thank you for your work on that. So next, we have the standing update for the COVID nineteen response in Easton.
Sure. Let me just minimize my window panels here so I could read. So as is the board's practice, you receive a kind of general weekly update on what the town is working on as it pertains to COVID. This is something that really is incredibly time-consuming and it's on everyone's mind. And, and, you know, trying to figure out what the new normal looks like, trying to plan for, you know, policy responses in addition to just the ongoing emergency response from our first responders. What is, what does policy look like in this age? How do you deal with outdoor dining, things like that? So our EMA, Emergency Management Association Leadership continues to meet and assess local, regional and national trends on COVID. And we're continuing to have important dialogue with folks in the community about priorities with local policy. United States, just over one point nine million cases. We're nearing a hundred and ten thousand Americans who've lost their lives. In Massachusetts, we're over one hundred thousand cases. Massachusetts is trending positively. The Commonwealth has put a lot of really tremendously valuable data on their website. They have weekly briefs basically that indicate the direction that data is moving as far as the rolling average of new cases, the percentage of positive cases of those that are tested, whether or not those are moving in the right direction to continue moving through the phases of Governor Charlie Baker's reopening plan. So I would really encourage folks to visit the mass.gov/covidnineteen website. So the town of Easton is standing at two hundred and fifty nine cases. It's actually a decrease of one from last week. And the town has moved to pointing to those weekly state reports because that level of information is, is more vetted and is less prone to any kind of reporting errors compared to daily information that gets pushed through our DPH portal for health inspectors and contact tracing. Occasionally, you can, you pick up some cases there for folks who don't actually live in Easton. Perhaps they work in Easton and it makes the numbers fluctuate a little bit now that the curve has plateaued. So we point to the weekly data available from the Department of Public Health. So we're sitting at about two hundred and fifty nine cases. We have been working and worked with the clerk's office to pull our vital records to get our, an approximation that in Easton, from March first through last week, of thirty one of our residents have lost their lives to coronavirus, which is horrible. And I feel wrong kind of talking about that in the context of a data point, but it's important information. It's a data point that we did not have, that was not coming through DPH records. And so we looked to our own records for that. So that is where we are as a community. The governor's reopening report, which was issued a couple of weeks ago and lays out four different phases for setting a variety of standards across the public and private sectors for what activities are permitted, what are prohibited. And as time goes on, an increasing amount of incredibly detailed guidance being issued from the Department of Public Health, the Executive Office of Environmental Affairs and a number of other state agencies to help businesses plan for reopening, as well as to give guidance to cities and towns on reopening. So effective today, Phase Two began. That announcement was made on Saturday. The governor issued some guidance on what Phase Two standards would be, I believe, on Tuesday. And that included, as we just talked about, and the board adopted a policy that would allow the select board to basically adopt a unified singular permitting process, including delegating it administratively to staff to allow for really expeditious permitting of outdoor restaurants, which will be permitted now with those restrictions. So that started today. For municipal services, as I actually just basically read through that, in addition to the restaurant planning, Board of Health and the Department of Health and Community Services has been in contact with private camps and other recreational businesses to support them in their questions regarding Phase Two opening standards. There's some really specific guidance on what can and cannot be done. And the Board of Health is working with those folks to see who can make that happen. Planning and develop economic development, our office and Health and Community Services are in contact with other businesses as they need guidance. For our services locally, town offices in Frothingham are continuing to provide services remotely during our regular hours. We're digging into and taking a look at what our own phase reopening of certain administrative departments will look like on an as-needed basis for appointments only in a first step. We're working through that right now, and I'll have more to come on that in the coming weeks. For elections, June is actually going to be a very busy month. There was an election at the town offices last week. The town clerk worked with Board of Health, DPW and a variety of other folks to basically transform the town offices into, it kind of resembled a grocery store where we had the markers on the floor to help people keep their distance. We made sure everything was at least six feet apart. We had health staff on site providing masks for folks who forgot to bring their own. We have virus guards in place and overall, it went off, I, I think, as close as an election in a pandemic can to going off without a hitch. I give Danielle, our clerk, a lot of credit for that. And one of the benefits of that, that was a special election for precinct six only. And so it was a smaller election and it was basically a trial balloon for that office because they will be busy on the twenty second with voter activity and getting folks checked in for annual town meeting and on, again, on June twenty seventh for the town election. So the lessons learned there and built into a elections contingency plan will be rolled into the next two electoral activities we do. And I think that's great. Parks and Recreation. So all of our parks and fields are open for use. That's with restrictions, including that folks should have face coverings on and that there is still the prohibition on gatherings of more than ten people. And that to the extent people can, especially when they're outside of their own family group, they should maintain social distance. Effective today, as part of Phase Two, playgrounds are open and available for folks. Again, same restrictions. People need to practice really good hygiene, make sure to wash your hands a lot, face coverings and social distancing to the maximum that people can. Recreation Department, unfortunately, Summer Day Program and Children's Races will not take place this summer. And the town pool, which has been closed, is going to remain closed for the season. That was a decision made in consultation with the Chair of the Recreation Commission and with the Department of Health and Community Services, looking at the standards for inland beaches, because that's technically what the town pool is. And the viability of maintaining twelve feet of distance between folks, not having swim lessons would just be incredibly difficult. And it's not something we think we can do and, and meet the health standards that the Commonwealth is calling for. So we're going to keep evaluating alternative recreational program opportunities throughout the summer as more information is state. And we appreciate people's patience with that as we work through that. Other municipal services, Public Safety and Public Works are fully operational. Public access is limited to the Little Thirpey Street Police Department for emergencies. Another service expanding today, effective today, is that all inspectional services, building, health, fire, will be performing all inspections now, provided that they can be done so in adherence to social distancing standards. And people can keep their distance so we can make sure that those things are still moving. So that's what I have on, on COVID.
Great, thank you. So while we were, while you were presenting, I'm in my office and something happened outside and we just lost power. So I fell off the call and just called back in again. I think power just came back on. So when technology is driving these readings, there's a lot of challenges. Thank you very much for that information, Connor. We really appreciate it. Any questions, Craig?
Not at this time.
Tom?
Just to say thank you for all the effort that the team continues to put in, trying to understand how all of these threads come together. It's just an incredible amount of thought that is, it's clear is going into it. And it's appreciated. So please pass that along to all the teams, Connor.
Great. Chuck?
No questions, Doc.
And Mark?
It's Mark on you?
No questions, sorry about that.
That's okay. And I just want to thank everybody in the community for really taking all the steps that they take to try to follow the rules and wear masks and, you know, the patience that people have had. It's, it's been a tough go for everyone. I think in the winter, when we've kind of cooped up in the house, you know, that had a different element that now that it's getting nicer and people want to get out, where we are starting to be able to do more things. But we still really need to remember that it's still a pressing issue. We don't want to see a recurrence of this. So again, thank you to everybody for doing everything they can and doing their part to keep the community safe. Then the next item that we have is the discussion and the votes on the annual town meeting warrant and the signing on the, of the warrant. We had voted to include articles and recommend some. We still have as outstanding articles, one, four, five and seven.
Right. So, Dottie, if I may, Article One, which is the establishment of revolving fund limits, is actually, the board did vote to recommend that at your last meeting. We realized after you did that that there was a typo specifically to Town Clerk Records account was listed as ten thousand. I should have said twenty. So I would just ask that the board revote to recommend that, provided you're willing.
So for Article One, would someone like to make a motion to recommend Article One is amended?
I'll move, Craig Barger.
Second, Tom Bursard.
And roll call, Craig?
Barger, yes.
Bursard, yes.
King, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Full Janetti, yes. Article Four, the supplemental fiscal year twenty twenty budgets.
Sure. So the board voted to include this at your last meeting. We are still getting an accounting of what these items may look like because it is also driven by the fiscal twenty but twenty one budget being in balance, which it's not yet. So no action at this time. So you will not have a recommendation printed in the warrant, even if by your next meeting, we do have that information just because tonight you will be voting to sign it so that it can be posted in accordance with the seven-day standard before town meeting. So no action on this at this time.
Okay. And Article Five, the supplemental fiscal year twenty twenty capital budget.
Sure. So this was an article that the board requested a little bit of additional information at, at the last meeting. So there, the town's existing adopted fiscal twenty budget included funding for the standard vehicle replacement for the police department. That funding was one hundred and thirty two thousand. The type of vehicle that was typical for replacement was unavailable. And so the police department requested a increased amount of twenty three thousand dollars, which would come from an existing unspent appropriation to allow them to move forward with their fiscal twenty vehicle replacements.
Okay. So would somebody like to make a motion to recommend Article Five?
I'll move, Craig Barger.
All moved, Craig Barger.
Second, Tom Broussard.
And roll call vote, Craig?
Barger, yes.
Broussard, yes.
King, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Full Janetti, yes. And then finally, Article Seven, the fiscal year twenty twenty-one operating budget.
Sure. So this article has been rewritten in a way to be general, to allow you to include it in a warrant, which I believe you may have, but I'm going to ask you to take a vote to do so again because the form has changed. It does not have line item listed in the warrant because as we're well aware, the budget is not balanced yet. So this motion does allow for that, or this article does allow for that. The motion at town meeting will get, will specify the amounts per department. And as we do with all of our budget iterations, we will make the balanced budget, assuming that is accomplished on the fifteenth, available online and in hard copy at town meeting. So voters can follow along with it. So I would ask for board just to take a vote to Article Seven as presented. But as the budget is not done, I cannot appropriately ask for a recommendation.
Okay. Would somebody like to make a motion to include?
All moved, Craig Barger.
Second, Tom Broussard.
And roll call vote, Craig?
Barger, yes.
Broussard, yes.
King, yes.
Lamb, yes.
We may have lost audio.
And Full Janetti, yes. Oh, boy. Okay. And thank you for that. Next is the town administrator notes, including any news of contract awards?
Dottie, I'm sorry. I would just ask the boat for, the board for one more vote, just to vote to sign the town meeting warrant.
Oh, okay. Would someone like to make a motion for the, the board to sign the warrant?
All moved, Craig Barger.
Second, Tom Broussard.
Roll call vote, Craig?
Yes.
Broussard, yes.
King, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Full Janetti, yes. Okay. Now on to the town administrator notes.
I have done.
Okay. Select Board Notes. Anyone?
No.
So I would, I guess I would just say that there was another peaceful protest this weekend that was run by students of the high school. And the pictures that I saw were just unbelievable. About five hundred people came out. Everybody was safe. Very inspirational. And I really commend the young people of our community for taking notice and taking action. And glad that, that it was a wonderful event and that so many people were able to attend. And with that is if there is any public comment or questions? I don't see anything. So the next is the acceptance of general minutes.
That was pulled from the agenda. We are still working on those. So there's no minutes for acceptance right now.
Okay. Well, with that, I would take a motion to adjourn.
All moved, Craig Barger.
Second, Tom Broussard.
And roll call vote?
Barger, yes.
Broussard, yes.
King, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Full Janetti, yes. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Have a good night. Thank you. You're safe.